You're good, Mayor?
Yes. Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a City Council Business Meeting. It is Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. It is 9:00 a.m. Please rise and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland?
Here.
Vice Mayor Branquino?
Here.
Councilmember Barbosa?
Here.
Councilmember Danko?
Here.
Councilmember Clufus?
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you so much. I will now open it up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comments on items not on the agenda? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin. I'll see no approach the podium. I'll close public comment.
My name is Bob Gilfillan. I'm the resident of Covington Park subdivision. And just for clarification, I'm not able to speak on items on the agenda.
That's correct.
And so therefore, if it's on the consent agenda?
You'll have the opportunity at that moment, sir.
At that moment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. You can come up to the podium.
Good morning, and congratulations on your elections and reelections. Quickly, I just not sure I know the order of operations here, but I'm not speaking on anything on the agenda, but I just want to make sure that when we get to the consent part of the agenda today, that we have the time for the council to consider everything on the agenda.
I will ask for public comment under consent agenda items.
So may I address the consent calendar consent agenda structure? Basically, the Roberts Law, that the way that normal consent agenda is created, I guess it's Order Page 288, Section 4132, "Legislature, city, town, and city councils or other assemblies which have heavy workloads, including a large number of routine and non-controversial matters," is how that consent agenda is normally used. And so it's for routine and non-controversial matters. The matters listed on it are taken up in order unless objected to, which I believe we have an opportunity to do, in which case they are restored to an ordinary process. And so basically, my suggestion is that we consider the agenda structure that you're using for consent agenda might be inappropriate for some of the topics today. And just in summary, at the start of a meeting, the meeting chair should ask the meeting attendees if anyone wants to discuss any of the items on the consent agenda, which I'm sure you're doing. If it is determined that an item on the consent agenda requires discussion, it must be removed from the consent portion and addressed individually, which I believe you're doing. And in summary, most of the things on a consent agenda are supposed to be considered non-controversial and not regular, and I believe there are some items that are controversial. And so in conclusion, it is important for all members to bear in mind that local governments should not sacrifice transparency and accountability for the sake of expeditious time management. And so that's all I'm mentioning.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Is the Jacksonville University, I didn't see it on the, so can I speak of that now?
No, sir. It's actually Agenda Item Number Two.
Perfect. I'll speak then.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is James Lee, and I reside in the P section. And during the last public comments, which I was present, I asked for a couple of investigations to happen, and I'd like for you guys to address the status of those investigations in your comments. Also, the council with the last public comments negated to answer the majority of the questions that the public asked, and I would ask that you go back to the record and answer those comments before the end of business today. And then, got some questions about Palm Coast Connect and Coastal Cloud and Salesforce. It's my understanding that no elected official is supposed to have a seat for Salesforce, yet Mayor Holland, you have one at the cost of taxpayers at over $1,200 a year. That seat gives you access to my data, to everybody's data out here. If by some chance your employer were to find out your password, whether you left it on your desk, or they hacked your computer, or some other reason, your employer would have accessed all of our data, all of it. And the damage that could be done to the citizens of the city is great when people who should not have access to that data have accessed it. So I'd like an investigation, a formal investigation into why you have that, why we're paying for it when no other council member has it, and what measures have been done to ensure the security of our data. And that's my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we will move forward with the approval of the minutes of the December 1st, 2020 Business Meeting.
I'll make a motion for an approval.
And the December 8th, 2020 Workshop.
All right. I'll second make that motion, Mayor.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Presentation Support of Higher Education Initiatives in the City of Palm Coast Town Center Innovation District.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Here today to present a true economic development initiative that's inconsistency in, is consistent with our CRA Downtown Innovation District Plan. So by way of background, Jacksonville University was founded in 1934, has operated for 86 years. They are situated currently on a 250-acre campus in Jacksonville, Florida, and for the first time in their history, they are contemplating an expansion, an offsite, and they have chosen Palm Coast Town Center for this historic expansion. Currently, Jacksonville University offers more than 100 programs, including majors, minors, programs at the undergraduate level, as well as 23 master and doctoral level programs. The City of Palm Coast is proposing an economic development investment in this project totaling $2.5 million, which would be broken down as follows. A $1.5 million allocation from General Fund Reserve, a $1 million structured forgivable performance loan from the State Road 100 CRA. We've completed the economic development analysis. The Jacksonville University Palm Coast Campus Initiative will make significant contributions to Palm Coast and the area. Our initial $2.5 million investment is matched by essentially 10 years of, or excuse me, five years of the same carrying cost resulting in a $10 million investment by Jacksonville University in our community. Additionally, the campus will add economic growth initially by hiring 15 part-time and 10 full-time employees with an annual personnel budget in the city adding $1.6 million. It will also impact the surrounding area in the healthcare workforce. They will be located in a renovated 6,000-square-foot taxable space in the CRA, which adds tax mileage to the city and to the CRA, and that is consistent with our CRA plan. The City Council's Strategic Action Planning, and again, and staff's review is a true economic development initiative that has been aligned through the Strategic Action Plan priorities of council for redevelopment of the State Road 100 Community Redevelopment Agency. To go by way of consistency with the city's policies, in the CRA plan, Policy 1.1.6.1, the city shall explore the feasibility of utilizing the CRA designation for the State Road 100 corridor throughout the city where redevelopment planning may be an appropriate tool to promote public and private investment. This is a public and private investment project. Policy 6.1, it is the goal of this plan to encourage the development of local private sector enterprises in the State Road CR 100 Community Redevelopment Agency. Policy 6.2, the Town Center Redevelopment and Regional Impact located within the SR 100 corridor community redevelopment area approves of 625,000 square feet of institutional uses, so these uses were contemplated in the Town Center DRI, Development of Regional Impact, and these institutional uses are defined in the comprehensive plan under 1.1.1.1 and include areas for public and private educational uses. Policy 7.5, it is in the redevelopment tools available in our Community Redevelopment Agency to include public and private partnerships. These types of agreements are important strategies in which a city, service, or business venture funded and operated through a partnership of government and one or more private sector companies. It does expressly allow that these tax revenues in the TIF may be used to provide for investment operations or to run jointly under an operations contract. Policy 7.6, in the Innovation District, which also, as you know, our Community Redevelopment Agency, our Town Center is also an Innovation District. It was created to promote growth within Town Center and to contribute economically, socially, and culturally to the city of Palm Coast. The district is high priority in the CRA plan, and the goal of the Innovation District is to spur forward-thinking, non-residential developments to stimulate economic growth at a high rate. Staff believes that JU Palm Coast Campus will do just that by locating here in the CRA, in the Innovation District, and contributing to the economic, educational growth and enrichment of our community and our CRA. That is also bringing in the investment and energy of the university faculty and the students that will be attending classes here in Palm Coast. Lastly, Policy 10.5 of Capital Projects, which is Table 17 of our CRA plan, includes those capital improvements recommended within the Community Redevelopment Agency and includes uses specifically enumerated as higher education campus as a priority of this plan, and at the time of the plan, estimated a cost of $8 million. We're significantly under that to see this happen. There's a few return objectives for the city's participation. Again, we believe that this meets the objectives of the Community Redevelopment Plan and the Innovation District Plans. Establishment of an in-person educational campus meeting healthcare workforce needs in the area that were so well documented through the UNF MEDNEXIS Plan and our partnership with many local healthcare institutions. This will directly impact creating a workforce to meet healthcare job requirements. The average wage of graduates from these programs is $60,000 a year. At the end of their initial period, graduating more than 300 students creates a payroll of more than $18 million. Jacksonville University will talk about it, but they intend to grow the number of students and ultimately, and hopefully, programs beyond the initiative proposal. So what are we proposing? $1.5 million allocation from general funds. This is within the budget, and the city, even if they make this allocation, will be on the high end and should exceed the high end of the general fund reserve policy and have general fund reserves in excess of 20%. How is this possible? This year, there were some one-time savings. We made some cuts early on in March when the start of the COVID-19 pandemic came on. We had some freezes in positions, and we've had some CARES Act reimbursement money. So essentially, asking to use one-time revenue for a one-time economic development project with a defined return on the city's investment. There's also contemplated the $1 million loan from the CRA. That money is available in the CRA and can be loaned, and in fact, is, as we cited through the policies, in keeping with the CRA purpose and plan. The loan will be structured to be forgivable over a three-year period, reducing the amount payable back at a rate of $27,788 per month. And if JU should terminate their presence, the loan payment will be due and accelerated immediately upon termination and due within three years back to the city of Palm Coast. You will also have a separate item today on your agenda, as you'll notice, under Item Three, if it feels like déjà vu, we just reallocated the CRA reserves back in November, and we're asking, again, as part of this, if this gets approved, to reallocate to identify the set aside of this economic development initiative through the CRA. With that, I know that Jacksonville University is here to make a presentation and address the council and community. So I'd like to introduce, if I may, President Tim Kost of Jacksonville University, who is an experienced business leader with more than 30 years in senior management of some of the largest corporations in the world, including PepsiCo, Bristol-Myers Squibb, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. He's also alumni of JU and has served for the, as their 12th president for nearly eight years. In that time, President Kost has led the private university through an area of exponential growth. I think they'll talk about that and how they've adapted to the in-person continued importance of education and how they believe facilities become and will remain, campuses remain an essential part of their growth and their unprecedented success, and they've achieved back-to-back years of the highest rankings in their history for ratings of programs, formed hundreds of industry partnerships, established dozens of new in-demand degree programs, which is what they're proposing to do here, and all designed to meet the growing needs of communities in the Northeast Florida region. So with that, welcome President Kost.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morton. Mayor Holland, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing us to be here to address you today on behalf of the Board of Trustees of Jacksonville University and more than 30,000 alumni, including myself and Ms. Dees. It's an honor to be here today. I'll keep my remarks brief because you've gotten a good deal of documentation from us. We're very excited about this. I'm the 12th president of this university. Eleven predecessors before me have chosen not to ever leave Jacksonville, Florida. This is about my ninth year, and the Palm Coast opportunity is not a deal to us, it's a partnership. We have been extremely impressed. This is my fourth trip down here now during COVID time, plus three times on your screen, and the idea of having Jacksonville University be able to partner with a region of the state of Florida that has such upside and such growth. We're educators. That's what we do. We create lots of partnerships, but in the end, what we're trying to do is bring our expertise as educators into an area where economic development can be brought forward, especially in the field of healthcare. Health education was determined by me and the folks that are with me today eight years ago to be the next great opportunity for Jacksonville University, the Northeast Florida region, and we think the Southeastern United States. And we started to create agreements and partnerships with Baptist, and Mayo, and Brooks, and Florida Blue, and others. And every once in a while, an enlightened set of elected leaders, Mayor, comes forward and says, "We see what you're doing at the same time we were looking to expand our footprint to additional places where economic growth could be rich." So the idea of creating undergraduates who go on to graduate toward their masters in the sorts of things you're going to hear about in a minute is hugely exciting to us. And COVID is an extraordinary challenge. But this type of disruption to the economy and to the industry called education provides us an opportunity to do things like this, to think differently. And we are very grateful you'll consider investing in us because we will be investing right alongside you. So this morning, I've brought three members of our cabinet, senior vice presidents of the university, Mr. Scott Bacon, the senior vice president of Strategic Operations, Ms. Margaret Dees, a graduate of class of 1986 of Jacksonville University, who's senior vice president of Economic Development, Government Affairs, and the person I'd like to bring forward in just a moment, Dr. Christine Sapienza. She's the provost, which means she's the chief academic officer of the university. That means everything we do as a teaching institution runs through Dr. Sapienza. Three degrees from the University of Buffalo, nine years as dean in her field at the University of Florida, a world-renowned expert in speech-language pathology, an inventor, a patent holder, an author, someone frankly, we were very fortunate to recruit away from Gainesville to come join us seven years ago, and she has built out the Speech Pathology Program, become dean of the Brooks Rehabilitation College of Healthcare Science, and now the provost. And while we know you've had plenty of documents from us in the past and you'd like to ask some questions, we thought we'd take five minutes or so and give a brief presentation. So Mayor, if I may, Vice Mayor, if I may, I'd like to introduce Dr. Christine Sapienza.
Dr. Sapienza. Thank you, President Kost, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Mr. Morton, good morning. It's really a pleasure to be able to be here today and just present with you, to you, a short overview of Jacksonville University. I am very confident in the partnership that we may have with Palm Coast to bring our healthcare academic programs to the region. I think this is bold. I think it is timely. I think it captures the spirit of innovation and creativity and growth that Palm Coast has been striving for, and I think that our missions match together. So I'm very grateful for the time that you've allowed me to present. As the president said, and the city manager, Jacksonville University, started out as a two-year college in 1934, had its first graduates in 1959, and here in 2020, we show ourselves as a comprehensive university. That means we grant bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, doctoral degrees, and even postdoctoral certificates. So we have grown extensively since our time. We are very proud of our 30,000-plus alums who now work around the country and around the world. As a population inside of Jacksonville University, we hold representatives from 51 different countries and 47 different states. We have a very diverse culture in Jacksonville and very proud to have, in the last two years, are ranking in the top 30 for the region's Beth South University. Inside of Jacksonville University, you will find, in this comprehensive nature, four different colleges, representing business, representing healthcare, representing the fine arts and the arts and sciences, which is at the core of our mission of liberal arts and sciences, surrounded by comprehensive graduate program in these distinct colleges. Included in that are two institutes, our Public Policy Institute, which was established in 2013, and for those who attend to Policy Matters, you'll see that since 2013, our Public Policy Institute has held local and state debates and has also established 70 different policy programs just since 2013 that we've hosted. We also are proud of our Marine Science Institute. We have a very significant partnership with OSERG, and so we attend to the river quality of the St. John's River. We are studying coral reefs. We produce multiple research projects, all dealing with water and ocean health. Comprehensive, we have 68 distinct undergraduate programs and 55 distinct graduate programs. In terms of our economic contribution, we have a $271 million economic contribution to the city. We generate $91 million in labor income, and I'm very proud of something that we call a quality enhancement program whereby our students engage themselves in community service. And so typically, we have over 4,000 hours of community service annually by our students. They are a part of the culture. They're a part of societal responsibility in Jacksonville. Our Davis College of Business was recently recognized as one of the best international programs for the MBA and the DBA. As some of you may know, we have a large military population, and we've ranked fourth in the best vet colleges in the U.S. So there are many accolades, too many to list, including one that's not on the slide, which is our nursing pass rates. This is referred to as the NLEX pass rate, and we have had the highest pass rates in the state of Florida compared to our peers. In fact, we had eight semesters in a row over a period of several years where we held the highest nursing pass rates in the state of Florida. So we are very proud of our healthcare programs. Since I've been with JU, we have attended to responding to market needs. I think we do a very, very good job in listening to the voice of the customer. Who is the customer? The customer is the student. The customer is the industry. And so you have to listen to both at the same time. And the students are talking to us about what their needs are, what are their career goals, what are the positive outcomes that they want to be a result of their education. And likewise, you have to parallel that to the voice of the customer of industry. And they're very specific about the type of educational training they want the student to be exposed to. And that goes into not only the technical training inside of these programs, but also the soft skill training, how they communicate, how they write, how they're able to present themselves. Leadership and ethics are key things that industry are looking for. And then, of course, workforce development gaps. What do we hear in healthcare? What do we know? We know that we are in crisis. We know that right now, inside of our own Flagler County, our hospitals are looking for hundreds of nurses to fulfill the job openings. As primary care physicians get towards retirement, nurses specifically, nurses, nurse practitioners, are going to become key assets for healthcare provision. In the last five years, because of these needs and workforce development, and due to funding from the state in a program called EPIC that allowed us to begin to build programs in healthcare and build programs in STEM, we were able to introduce 40 distinct programs in the last five years, surrounding areas of healthcare, healthcare credentials, healthcare certificates, as well as things in science, technology that are specific to building areas inside of our IT needs. Twenty new programs that were specific to the Northeast that weren't there before Jacksonville University set out its strategic plan with 3,700 students impacted. A few examples. We were the first program in Northeast Florida to bring a Masters of Speech Language Pathology. And many of you may not be familiar with the Speech Language Pathology Program, but when you think about children born with congenital deficits, language issues, hearing issues, as well as adults with stroke and Parkinson's and other chronic diseases, speech pathology is that rehabilitation field that serves from birth to death. Along with that, programs in patient healthcare and quality, extensions of nurse practitioner programs in psychiatric nurse practice, acute care gerontology, emergency nurse practitioner, as well as programs in health informatics, occupational therapy, and programs focused on health and wellness. So we have demand. We have, in the healthcare applications alone, when you think about those programs, the demand for students wanting to come to Jacksonville University is eight times the amount of slots that we have to enter them into those programs. So there is a dynamic there. There is an extension there that allows us to be successful in this proposal at Palm Coast, not only to serve those applicants, but also the transfers that would be coming from Daytona State and other surrounding schools around Flagler County and Palm Coast. So here, just as the details of the type of growth that we've had in five years, it's really quite astronomical when you think about 70% growth in programs and 230% growth in areas where we needed to have, you know, significant build in these areas. I believe the same thing will happen here in Palm Coast. You have the demand, you have the need, and you have the healthcare systems that allow us to support these students in practice. So on this slide, you can see that we have spent a tremendous amount of time building these affiliation agreements with very powerful industries, not only for them to serve our students in practicum, but also, again, to tell us what exactly they need in terms of the areas of specialty. I know that we can do the same thing here in Palm Coast. I am very confident about it when you look at the statistics and the outcomes that we have produced in the last five years. So personally, and representing my colleagues, we find Palm Coast to be a premier location. We're excited to be able to present this proposal to you. We thank you for considering the investment, and we hope that we would have rapid deployment of this programming following your consideration of our proposal. And like Nellie, who was, is our JU Master. And like Nellie, who was, is our JU mascot and lived in the Flagler County marine land for 61 years, we're in it for the long haul. We're here to stay, and I envision, as Provost of the university, that after bringing healthcare here, there will be tremendous opportunity in the areas of business and significant contributions that can be brought forward from our Linda Barry Stein College of Fine Arts that we can contribute to the arts and the culture. So I think this is just the beginning, and again, I thank you for your time. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
So, Council, this is under Presentations, under the agenda, so we'll open it up for questions for Council or comments. We will not take any action on this agenda item. Okay.
And Mayor, I had some remarks.
I think they want to just either ask questions. Yeah, if I can just finish sort of like a housekeeping. And Agenda Item Number Three, we will recess the Council convene as part of our contribution where the public will be open to comment on Agenda Item Number Three, as well as under Resolutions, Agenda Item Number Four. So for purposes of our comments now, this is just to discuss as a council. Mr. Morton?
Yes, sorry, I just had some conclusory remarks I wanted to make when JU was finished to address staff's perspective of why this, why now. The best leaders in industry, the best leaders in business, the best leaders in government have continued to pivot, they've continued to adapt, and they've continued to find paths forward, even in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, and I think that's a step in that direction to continue to advance. On the financial front, this is a one-time, this is not going to be recurring dollars. JU is aware of that, and their investment will match and exceed ours. These are one-time revenues available. We will not be increasing taxes. We will not be creating indebtedness through this proposal. We believe it also starts to address the concern that has been long-held in this county of shifting the tax burden away from the millage and our single-family residences towards business, towards industry, towards economy, and towards education. Staff believes this builds a complementary system that supports and comes alongside UNF, Daytona State College, Advent Health, Flagler, and others. And lastly, along our economic development initiatives and ideas, we, staff believes this is a true economic development initiative that creates an ecosystem built off education, off healthcare, off medical technology, and medical platforms that fulfills the vision of the CRA, of the Town Center, and the city's strategic action planning items. Thank you.
Council, any questions or comments at this?
I just have a couple of comments, and I would like to start by saying that Tim Cust, Christina Cepienza, thank you. Thank you, thank you, 100 times thank you. This is a lifetime opportunity for us here in Palm Coast. I doubt that I should not, that we don't have 100, 200, 300 cities that wish to have this opportunity that you actually given us. For that, I thank you. You said it very well. This is not a partnership, this is not a deal. It's a partnership. Any other company that will bring us the amount of jobs, the high-paying jobs, we probably would have had to pay them one way or the other in tax breaks, because that's what companies do. So any penny invested on you, it's a good penny. Healthcare is dear to me for obvious reasons, and so when we know that we need 100 nurses or more in this area, our ears should be like this. 23 masters and doctoral degrees. That's nice. That's real nice. Let's hope that we keep some of those, you know, people that take those masters and doctor degrees here in Palm Coast. We know we're not going to keep them all, but let's hope that we keep them. I wish I could take credit for what's being done, but I bow to you, ma'am, because you've been working this for two years, and you never bragged about it. Thank you for your job on this, and thank you for what you did, for accepting us. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Again, I would also like to say thank you 101 times if it adds anything. I'm very excited about this opportunity because it's going to add the capability to our residents and our youth to be able to stay in Palm Coast and to thrive, and I think the entire benefit will be felt across the diversity of our entire community. And I'm excited for this opportunity, and I would also like to thank our mayor for pushing this item forward and working so hard on bringing an opportunity that, like Vice Mayor Brinkeno said, any other city in our state would long for this opportunity. So I'm humbled and thankful that you have decided to partner with Palm Coast, and I think this is an investment in ourselves, as well as a partnership between us. So thank you.
Yes, I would like to say that I welcome your university here. You're more than invited to come join us. However, I do have problems with spending 2.5 million of our taxpayers' dollars, and this is taxpayers' money. And sooner or later, we're going to have to get it from our taxpayers, and that's going to mean tax increases for us, sooner or later. We're in the midst of a pandemic, COVID-19. A lot of our businesses have lost revenue. A lot of our taxpayers have lost their jobs or a percentage of their incomes. Our own city employees took a 10% pay cut because of COVID-19. So I just think this is a great idea, but it is the wrong time for our city to reach into our pocket and do another MedNecks. And so I just want you to know, you're more than invited, if this is a great deal for you to come here, you're more than invited to spend your own money and come here. Love to have you, but I am opposed to spending the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
So, Council, did you have any comments? Okay. I would just like to add, you know, when you think about career pipelines and career choices and options, we have an incredible opportunity in Flagler County School District. We have an extraordinary school district right here in our backyard that offers a foundation for those students that wish to advance in a variety of ways, job-wise. We do have a medical pathway that was created over at our high school. Those students already have a waiting list for students that are wanting to participate in the medical flagship. So this truly is a pipeline. Daytona State College is incredibly supportive of this opportunity. They as well offer a tremendous value to our community and have made an investment and continue to do so over the years and have continued to grow. They see this as a continuation of that pipeline. And then you have, obviously, the private sector hospital systems, and not just hospitals, we're talking healthcare opportunities across the board. So the variety of jobs that this will offer, not only to our residents, but to the region. When you think about Ormond Beach, Volusia County, those cities that are housed within Volusia County, this is a drive to them to come up and participate with this, you know, university. St. Augustine, I mean, this is a very close drive. So this is a regional opportunity. Obviously, we're very proud Palm Coast would be at the center of it, and it does, as Mr. Morton indicated, align with our strategic action items, as well as our strategic priorities. So this is a true economic development investment. This is one that I am very proud of. I know our community is very proud of. We're excited to have you here, and I really appreciate your commitment and investment and your innovative approach. I have been very impressed of the approach of Jacksonville University. Every single time we've had conversations, it's really been about the community and the community needs, what drives those community needs. So engaging with our local hospital systems has been really critical to understand what job needs are current, what job needs are looked at and forecasted in the future, and I think this actually facilitates a lot of those discussions. So I appreciate it.
Ma'am, Mayor, can I just add one sentence?
Yes.
I just want to remind certain people that if we don't invest as a society, if we don't invest in education, we're going to be investing in jails, rehab centers, and so on, and so on, and so on. Thank you.
I don't see any questions or comments from the Council, so I am going to move to our agenda, which is three. So I have to recess the City Council and convene the State Road 100 Corridor CRA Board, State Road 100 Corridor Community Redevelopment Agency Resolution approving, amending the State Road 100 Corridor CRA FY 2021 budget in the amount of $1,683,602 by appropriating the available fund balance. Mr. Morton?
Thank our overall mayor, City Council. Again, as I mentioned in the presentation, this was just done in November. You reallocated or appropriated, I should say, that 1,683,602 fund balance to land and capital. What this will do is re-appropriate yet again by designating the $1 million towards the JU Forgivable Loan Project and less the contingency balance of approximately $40,000. The remainder, that would be $40,396, the remainder would remain allocated to capital projects and land use purchases.
Council, there's not any questions about this particular agenda item? Again, this is relative to the CRA dollars. If not, I will open up to the public for any discussion or questions or comments on Agenda Item Number Three specifically to the CRA dollars being discussed today. Okay, I will see none. I will close public comment, take it back to this council, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Hey, I will adjourn the State Road 100 Corridor CRA Board and reconvene our City Council. Agenda Item Number Four is a resolution approving a budget amendment relating to the support of higher education initiatives in the City of Palm Coast Town Center Innovation District. Questions, or Mr. Morton?
General Mayor, City Council, as discussed earlier, this would amend the general fund reserves of the City of Palm Coast and identify and allocate the $1.5 million towards this initiative.
Okay. Again, any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Four specific to the budget amendment relating support of higher education initiatives in the City of Palm Coast, please do so at this time. I will close public comment. I will take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, was that? Did you oppose?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So passes three to two. Okay, we will now move to Agenda Item Number Five. Thank you so much, Jacksonville University, and welcome to Palm Coast. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Five is a resolution approving the reduced interest rate applicable to the State Utility System Refunding Revenue Note Series 2017 with Center State Bank.
Thank you again, our overall mayor, City Council. Helena Howes is here to discuss this item, or in person, in Zoom.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Part of our budget discussions was to look at the city's debt structure and look for refinancing opportunities. Now, we've had Mark Galvin, our financial advisor, come before council a few times at workshop to discuss the opportunities that he found, and two of those are the refinancing of the Series 2017 and 2016 loans. And today, we have Chris Rowe, Bond Counsel, to speak to the item and answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
All right, Matt, is it a presentation or is it just questions open from the council and comments?
It's just questions open for the council. I do not believe there's a presentation. This was considered in workshop and combined with the two life of the notes, and maybe Mark wants to speak to this, would pride, the Center State proposal provides the city with an approximately $118,800 annual savings, which is $1.9 million over the life of the issue, and the 2016 note is an approximate $34,000 annual savings with an approximate $275,000 savings over the life of the loan. Again, these were discussed at the workshop and were directed by council to, as we do every year with the budget, look for opportunities to save money on debt issues.
Okay. Council, any questions or comments on this agenda item?
I just want to say congratulations. This is a great deal. It's saving us money, and keep up the good work.
Any other comments? I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Five, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Six is a resolution approving the reduced interest rate applicable to the Utility System Refunding Revenue Note Series 2016 with the Marist Bank.
Thank you, General Mayor, City Council. This is the second one I mentioned. This is the 2016 series note, so we just discussed. This one, again, reduces the city's cost burden $34,000 annually and $275,000 over the life of the issue.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item? Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Six, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Seven is an ordinance, Mr. Reishman.
Mayor, Council, this is the second read of Ordinance 2020 regarding the South Palm Coast Park Master Plan Development. The title is as follows. In ordinance of the City Council, the City of Palm Coast order providing for the amendment of the official zoning map is established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the official zoning map for 88.61 acres, more or less, of certain real property drawn and located on U.S. Highway 1, and being more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, for master plan development to master plan development district, MPD zoning district. This ordinance provides for conflict severability and provides for an effective date. Mayor, Council, this is quasi-judicial. If there have been any ex parte communications since the first reading of this ordinance, those should be disclosed at this time.
Council, any ex parte communication?
None.
None?
None.
Okay. Mr. Morton?
Thank you, General Mayor, City Council. We have Jose Papa here for a brief presentation and for a second reading and to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. As we all know, this is the second reading of the development agreement for South Palm Coast Park, and I'd just like to briefly summarize some of the changes that you approved at first reading and have now been incorporated into the master plan development agreement. So again, just very briefly, this is a vacant 88-acre parcel at the western end of Palm Coast Parkway in south of Hargrove Grade. As I mentioned, council approved certain changes to the development agreement at first reading, and those have now been incorporated in the second reading, and that's just the following changes, that in addition to a medical campus, the only other permitted use on the site may be a governmental or public service facility. A change to the maximum impervious service ratio to .75, a maximum floor area ratio of .55, and that, as directed by City Council, that the maximum height of 100 feet is limited only to hospital, medical, or educational facilities. And that finally, that there is a condition that developer and the city will coordinate on delineating the westward extension of Palm Coast Parkway. And as such, the master plan has been incorporated to show that potential western expansion, extension of Palm Coast Parkway, as you can see on this updated master plan. So very briefly, this was approved for recommendable, recommended for approval by the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board at their public hearing, and City Council voted approval with changes at first reading. And I believe the applicant is here, if there are any additional questions.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item? Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Seven, please do so at this time. I'll close public comment, take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We're now to the consent agenda item. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on either eight, nine, 10? Please do so at this time.
Bill?
What's that?
Madam Mayor, I would like to have Item Number Nine removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other member of the public wish to make public comment on either eight or 10? Eight or 10, ma'am? Thank you. Eight or 10? Thank you. Counsel, I see no one approach. I'll ask for a motion to approve eight and 10.
I will make the motion to approve Consent Item Eight and Ten.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Approves four to one. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is a resolution approving an option and ground lease agreement with Diamond Towers for construction of a telecommunications tower at Palm Coast Golf Club.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting in January.
I'll second it.
Well, a few reasons.
We don't, we don't, first of all, you cannot speak out at a public meeting. Secondly, there's a motion on the floor. I'm going to ask for a second. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Now we can discuss.
Okay.
Yes.
I think Councilman Burkino asked why, and there's just a few reasons. I thought you did. If you didn't, I can still explain why. A few reasons. Number one, we brought up an issue, and I think it was Councilman Burkino that might have brought it up, of what is this thing going to look like when we enter Palm Coast? And we haven't seen an image of it. I have no idea what this tower is actually going to look like. I know what a cell phone tower looks like, but I don't know what this particular one will look like. I would like to see a photograph. I would like to see some sort of Photoshop image that gives us a view of what this looks like when you cross that bridge in the Palm Coast. I would like to see that. I also have received, like everyone, I've received a lot of emails on this subject from residents, and I want you all to know, if you're here, I read every one of your emails, and I understand your concerns on this, and I have concerns on this. We also have a company that has offered to do a free analysis for us. I would like to give that company the opportunity to do that free analysis for us. I'd also like to know if there's any, if the city looked at any alternative sites where this wouldn't be 300 feet from people's homes that would serve the purpose and give us great cell service, because I want great cell service. I mean, our cell service is horrible here, let's be honest, so I'd love to have it. But I have those concerns, so I would like to give staff an opportunity to give us those images and to present us with alternatives, so I would like to table this thing.
Well, so the motion on the floor is to table it. Any member of the public wish to make comment on item only to table, not the issue itself, but to table, has the opportunity to do so now. Okay.
Yeah, so my name is Deborah Vitale. I'm a, I live at 9th Century Oak Place. My property line is within 300 feet of the proposed cell tower. I'm also a registered nurse, graduate of University of Florida, a founding member of Protect Palm Coast, and the managing director of Vitatech Electromagnetics. For 30 years, we've been dealing with EMI RFI solutions and shielding and assessments and simulations. So that's who I am, and I'm also the grandmother of two toddlers that currently live with me, a two-year-old and a three-year-old, and I'm concerned about the health effects on those two children. So I did an analysis of the master plan.
Ma'am, this is about to table the item. You can speak to about tabling the item, not the issue.
I can speak about tabling?
Yes.
Okay, so can I submit any of my exhibits?
You can speak about, the motion on the floor is to table the item. The only motion on the floor is to table.
Motion to table the item and submit my exhibits. Can I talk about the exhibits?
No, ma'am. You can talk about tabling the motion.
Okay, so I think that we should table the motion because the original plan for the cell tower was supposed to be next to the Green Lion in coverage area number seven. Okay? And now it has moved over by the maintenance building, and we want to know why it moved. Diamond assessment, Diamond Palm.
This is again, tabling the motion, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, am I done? Can I submit any exhibits?
She'll be able to talk about it, I think. If she, if it's not tabled, she'll be able to speak about it.
That's correct.
So don't worry.
I'm a little hearing impaired, so it's hard to hear.
So we're just talking about tabling it. If it gets, if it doesn't get tabled, you'll be able to come back up and discuss it.
I think tabling the item is an excellent idea. I live in Palm Coast. My name is pretty relevant, I guess. I think your ideas were excellent. Have we looked at other options? How many have we looked at? All the past towers that have been put up?
Table, tabling the item is the discussion.
Table the item.
Thank you.
I'm also for tabling the item, and I know you don't want any further comment, but there should be, specs should be put into this analysis as well.
Tabling the item, sir, thank you.
Yeah, but put specs in. Power density, frequencies emitted from this tower. This is, you're making a decision about things you know nothing about.
If you could please speak and state your name for the record, I would appreciate that.
Yes. I'm Lou Vitale. I live in 9th Century Oak Place. I will now be living next to a future cell tower. I do propose and have sent request to table this matter, and I fervently support that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
William Bellack. I'm requesting to table the item so we can do a further investigation on what's going on here, of its impact on our community.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dennis McDonald. I'd like to table the item, and I, because I did not get the answers to the financial questions that I asked Mr. Morton at the workshop meeting regarding the very large negative numbers regarding the cell phone service that we receive here in the city. Both of those were, one was a six-digit negative number, and the other one was a five-digit
They're supportive of tabling the item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a favorer.
Next speaker.
My name's Bob Gilfillan, resident of Covington Park, and I also support tabling this item for further study and evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Celia Buglisi, and I respectfully request our mayor and counsel to table this item because of the residence so close to the 150-foot tower. Thank you in advance, please.
My name is Tony Millidantry. I live at 13th Century Oak Place, and I am for tabling this item.
Next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Elena Fitzgerald, lived at 30 Cole Place since 1977. I'm one of your pioneer people. Please table this motion.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Amy Costa. I'm at 16th Century Oak Place. Please table the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Tiffany McCoy. I live in 27 Cole Place, and I would like to table this item to basically what the gentleman stated to validate all the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is William Furry. I live at 24 Cole Place. I am concerned about the health effects on my children with this tower, and I'm asking you to please table this.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Marie Wolf, and I live on Water, Clubhouse Drive, 104 Clubhouse Drive, Waterside condominium, and I am in favor of you tabling the item, please.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Polly Bell. I live at 25 Cole Place, one of the properties which is closest to the proposed tower. I have extreme concerns about it, as we have two small children, and I request that this be tabled. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Jamie Furry, and I'm at 24 Cole Place, and I just ask you to pause this and hold this item, for I have two small kids that live there.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Colonel, U.S. Army Retired Jim Challander, and I request that you table this motion.
Thank you. Next speaker.
George Murray, 111 Clubhouse Drive. Please table for your agenda.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, and this is Chris Martin of 25 Cole Place, with a view to moving it somewhere else, please, I request that you table this motion.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Gale Eldridge. I live at 1 Cynthia Court. Please table this item. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else approach? I'll close public comment. Counsel, this is on tabling the item. The motion on the floor is just to table the item.
Mayor, Counsel, and for those in the audience, I think it's important for purposes of knowing what we're tabling, for better, for worse. This, this action that you're either going to consider today or at some point in the future is not the threshold or preliminary decision of where this tower should go. This is a lease. It's an option. This lease and this option is what is, is consistent with the master plan that was previously approved, as you have indicated, as is indicated in the agenda item. So that, that, wireless master plan was done by a company, a consultant, and that company evaluated many, many potential sites and reached a conclusion that there were 29 publicly-owned fill-in sites that would be appropriate. So on, so the City Council, City of Palm Coast, on January 2018, approved that master plan. This particular location was part of that master plan. That master plan, which the city has been working with and for, calls for ultimately those sites which were previously selected to be used to help with our cell tower service. Today's action, whether you do it today or in the future, is consistent with and fulfillment with, fulfillment of, excuse me, fulfillment of that previously approved wireless master plan. So I just want to make sure everyone understands, certainly as the discretion of this counsel, but this is not a rezoning, this is not, this action today is not a rezoning, it's not quasi judicial, it's not a citing matter. This is something that is an executive approval, consistent with a prior, previously approved plan that he, that he counsel, this counsel, the city council, previously approved in a public meeting. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as far as the action that's being taken today. This is not, again, I'm going to say it again, this is not, this is not, this agenda item is not to consider the site, it's to consider whether the lease is consistent with the previously approved master telecommunications master plan. That's what I just wanted everyone to understand.
No public comment is over, sir. Public comment is over. I'm calling for a called question on the tabling of this matter. That's the only item considered for discussion right now. All those in favor of tabling this issue, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye. I mean, opposed.
So the motion fails. So, we will, we will take the agenda item now, that is to be discussed for the lease agreement, the ground lease agreement, as stated by our city attorney, to be considered today. So this item and topic is for discussion on the lease agreement with Diamond Communications.
If there's a staff presentation, we can do that first, or you could entertain a motion in a second and then public discussion.
Open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on the lease agreement of Diamond Communications on Agenda Item Number Nine? Please do so at this time.
Okay. My name is Deborah Vitale. I already introduced myself. Mr. Reichman, coverage area seven, which is part of 10 coverage areas.
Ma'am, if you could address your, you need to, ma'am, under our council rules and procedures, you need to address your comments to the mayor, please.
Coverage area seven was to include area 1.9 acres at the Green Lion site, not by the maintenance building. The coverage area seven equals 81,000 square feet, which translates into 1.9 acres. Document. This is page, this is from page 25 of your master plan. It even shows the 1.89 acres.
Ma'am, this is not about the land use issue. This is about the lease agreement. That's the agenda item for us today.
Diamond, Diamond Communications on the website even shows the longitude and the latitude for coverage area number seven, which is 1.9 acres over by the Green Lion, not by the maintenance building.
This is the lease agreement, ma'am.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And I have 114 petitions saying they don't want it.
We have, this is about the lease agreement. Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm having an issue here, a very serious issue, about truth and validity and moral decency, which apparently is arbitrary. In the original agreement by the master plan, it was supposed to go next to the Green Lion and the JDI proposed 50 townhouses. Nobody mentioned that during the presentation in November of 2019 that we went to the city.
Sir, this is about the lease agreement.
Well, I just want to say that something has changed, and therefore the lease agreement is invalid. Since you have changed the coordinates of the lease agreement, you are committing a crime. Now, I just want you to know, the lease agreement has the coordinates of the tower. The master plan has different coordinates of the tower, and therefore you cannot pass this. If you do, Protect Palm Coast will begin options, litigation and other issues, because we do not consider this lease agreement valid because it does not describe the property in the master plan. Somebody has moved it for personal benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you for comments. Next speaker.
Dennis McDonald. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Hope we can end this on a much better note than we're starting it on. All the time I come here to the meetings, and the one thing that I hear all the time from our city manager is transparency. I also hear from him all the time that he's serving the community. You got to explain to me how this serves the community. It doesn't, quite simply. In 2017, when you put this plan into place, I looked at it. You know that I looked at it. Do you think I wouldn't tell my neighbors, Bob and Tony, that there was an antenna in their backyard?
This is about the lease agreement, sir?
That's about this lease agreement and where this lease agreement is. This lease agreement was, is very different, as Mr. Vitale has already stated, and it, there is no question about the fact that this thing has been moved, and the question is, why was it moved? And was there anything else involved in moving that? In 2017, the lease agreement would have been in a completely different place. Now, it is located many, many feet from where Now it is located many, many feet from where it was, and it looks to be for the benefit of Jacobi Enterprises. Thank you very much, and we all know who the contributors were to various campaigns.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Again, my name's Bob Gilfillan. I live at 11th Century Oak Place and very close to the proposed location. As regard to the lease agreement, I have a question. Back in 2017, did the city council look into health impact, both the environment and...
About the lease agreement, sir.
Did the lease agreement look into that before you agreed to it? And also, the lease agreement, what, was there discussion at that time of the type of cell tower? And it's, was it 4G, 3G, 5G? Were these questions raised and evaluated? I'm a professional engineer, and I deal with risk, and I'd just like to know if the council looked at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Again, my name is Celia Puglisi, and I'm going to beg again to our council, Mayor, Mr. Brankino, take in consideration the residents, affecting the residents, and please do not approve this lease agreement. Respectfully, I'm asking you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I would like to know why the original lease at the Green Lion has been moved to less than 300 feet from my backyard, and why it's been moved, and who moved it, and what was the decision for moving the lease?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Morning again. Colonel, retired Jim Challander. Have to forgive me about this protocol. I'm very new to the area, literally three months, and this tower is being built with under 300 feet from my backyard. And I know that we're supposed to be talking about the lease. I don't understand how we're talking about the lease and not talking about the impact of the tower, because to me, they are one and the same.
But they're not, sir. This is about the lease agreement with Diamond Communications.
But the lease agreement allows the tower to be placed on that property.
Sir, I understand that.
So thereby, thereby, we are talking about the tower.
Sir, but we're...
Okay? Ma'am, I don't want to play semantics, and that's what we're playing here. We're using semantics to walk around the fact that we're going to vote on a tower that is going there. And you are impacting the livelihoods and the lives of people in that area. I wasn't here when you voted on this master plan in 2018. And from what I can tell, and all the time I spent in the last four days losing sleep in my health to go through this matter, which we got last minute notice on Thursday or Friday via newspaper article, that this was happening. And from what I can tell, what this lease is saying does not agree with what the master plan was approved. Thereby, the lease is illegal and unlawful, and needs to be reviewed and looked at to go back against what is required. I don't want to be here doing politics. I didn't retire from the military after 25 years to take friendly fire in my own backyard to have to deal with this. I wanted to have a quiet, nice, pleasurable retirement, live in the beautiful city of Palm Coast. And right now, I feel like I've been totally hoodwinked, and I feel like part of my friends screwed, and I'm ready to move out, and I don't want to do that, because the property value of my house is going to plummet when we put the cell tower in there. And I'm sorry for being upset. I am very upset, and I usually am very commattered. But this is unheard of. This is an absolute travesty to the citizens that live in that area. And I can guarantee you, one of the key words that you said was "on public property." And I hate, and I'm not trying to accuse anybody here, because I don't like to do that, but this is a pure money grab by the city to take the revenue from the tower for $25,000 lease, and then it's 40% of their revenue annually. It's a pure money grab at the expense of all the people in here and all the people that couldn't make it because it's 9 o'clock meeting, and they're either sleeping or out on the golf course. Has anybody bothered to go out there and look where this tower is going to be? Has anybody bothered to come to the property to look at where it's going to happen? I invite all of you to please come to my residence. I am the closest one, I have giant bay windows that's going to be staring at this tower, and I'm going to be irradiated 24/7.
Sir, I'm asking you to talk about the lease agreement.
I am talking about the lease, ma'am, because the lease has to do with the tower. If you're telling me you're leasing that property, and you're going to put a bubble gum machine there or a golf cart washing machine there, then that's fine, but that's not what you're putting there. You're putting a cellphone tower that's going to impact people.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? So I get, I'll close with one statement. If you lived 300 feet of this monstrosity, would you want it in your backyard affecting your health and your property values?
The coordinate's been moved.
I don't know. That's a question, that's a question for the...
I mean, if it is, then that's an issue.
That's a, you didn't run it?
Absolutely.
Hello, my name is Lee David. I live at 6 Live Oak. I don't think any single one of you would allow this to happen if it were near your properties. I'm pretty confident none of you live within 600, 700 feet of this place. Do you?
Sir, can you speak about the lease?
No, you don't, you don't.
Sir, can you speak about the lease agreement?
It is about the lease agreement. I think that you would not allow this lease agreement to be within 500, 600 feet of your property, and you're not. Grand Haven there is not within that close. None of you would allow this. You guys would not allow it to your property, but you will for other people, because, yeah, who cares? It's not right. There's lots of other places in Palm Coast. At least look. Show the people that elected you that you looked for.
This is about the lease agreements, sir, about different locations.
For the lease agreement. Find another place for this lease agreement. Have you looked? Show us.
Is there something specific about the lease in which you would like to discuss? Something specific about the lease?
I have three minutes to speak. I think I'm pretty clearly discussing the lease agreement. None of you would allow this quote-unquote lease agreement within a few hundred feet of your personal properties. You would not. We would not be here if it were. Okay? You're lying if you were, because you're not. Otherwise, put it next to your place. Look for other places in Palm Coast. At least look. I still have a minute and 45 seconds. Look for other places to put this lease agreement. What places have you looked at? All the previous towers that have been put in Palm Coast?
This is about the lease agreement for this location, sir.
This is about the lease agreement. How many other quote-unquote lease agreements?
About this location, sir. That's what we're talking about.
Yes. We're talking about this lease agreement and this location. Find another place to put this lease agreement. I still have a minute and 15 seconds. I'm still allowed to talk. We don't all talk calmly. This is the lease agreement. So, once again, please look for other places in Palm Coast to put this lease agreement.
Madam Mayor, you have the power under the council rules and procedures to clear the speaker out of order if you so wish.
How am I out of order? Because I'm not super calm. Still 55 seconds.
This is speaking about the particular agenda item, which is in the backup, which describes the lease agreement with Diamond Communications.
I'm talking about the lease agreement. So please look for other places and let us know what you've looked at for this particular lease agreement. What other places are available? Have you looked? Show us which ones you've looked for. For the lease agreement. I mean, you're just going to vote on something without looking at other options? This is serious. Again, none of you live very close to this quote-unquote lease agreement. If you did, we would not be having this discussion.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
I have eight seconds.
Okay, sir. You're not speaking about the lease agreement.
We are speaking about the lease agreement.
No, sir. Mr., before another speaker gets up, Mr. Morton, I need you to address the issue of coordinates. If the coordinates were changed by the original area that was identified, that's an issue. So please address that now.
And therefore, you cannot hold on.
No, you cannot speak out of order. I've asked you to stop before, sir. Stop.
We've got...
You asked to be removed, sir, if you do this again.
I want to be removed because I protest these procedures, and I will now organize a recall for your position as mayor. Thank you very much.
All right, so we've got Diamond, we've got Diamond Tower available to address the coordinate issue and the location of this facility.
Mayor, counsel, I think it's important, and for the folks in the audience, just to understand, certainly want to hear everyone's comments, but on the other hand, we need to run an orderly meeting, and for that purpose, the city council has passed rules of procedure. And in Section G, Subsection 1, it says, "Any person who fails to confine remarks to the identified subject of business shall be cautioned by the mayor and given the opportunity to conclude remarks on the subject in a decorous manner and within the designated time limit. Any person failing to comply as cautioned shall be barred from making additional comments during the meeting by the mayor unless permission to continue or, again, address the city council as granted by the majority." So all I would ask you is, please understand that these are rules that this council has passed and tries to live by, so that we can all, you know, have a civil and orderly discussion of this agenda item.
Thank you. Matt, is someone on to discuss this?
Here we have Dan Turnpaw and Dominic Borley from Diamond Towers. They did a site visit at the location, and they can address the issue of the coordinates in the master plan and where it's located now.
Thank you. Are they unmuted?
Yes, I'm unmuted. Hello, Mayor and City Council, this is Dan Turnpaw with Diamond Communications. The location, just to address the location, the location is in the wireless master plan. The wireless master plan's location was the Palm Harbor Golf Club, and when the site was walked over the summer, along with engineering and construction, and the operations folks from the golf club and city staff, upon their recommendation, that exact location was selected at that time over the summer.
Now, we're asking about the specific coordinates originally adopted on the master plan.
Right. I mean, the golf club is a large golf club, so that's just, that was just sort of a spot on the golf club.
Folks, please, we're trying, we're getting the consultant on the line to try to address your concerns, and we're asking questions. Please let us proceed with that.
So how are the original coordinates laid out on the map, sir?
Well, again, I mean, I think the original coordinates for this location, since this is a very large parcel that's controlled by, by the city, that, those coordinates were selected as sort of indicative only, and the exact location was picked upon a walk of the site with city staff and with the operations folks at the golf club to be the best location, to kind of stay out of the way of the operations of the golf club.
So you're saying the original coordinates that were adopted on the original master plan are indeed different than what's being discussed and approved today?
I mean, I think it's a matter of feet away, but it's, it's the same, it's the golf club is sort of, you know, the way we thought about the, what's in the master plan.
Matt, who walked the site with staff, and who made this decision?
Doug can answer that.
I believe there are staff from Palm Harbor Golf Course. Mitch, I believe, was there. I'm not sure who else from the city was there. That was before my involvement.
And was the original site shown differently, and when they first walked the site, on where it was approved, with the coordinates to where we're discussing today?
I'd have to ask Dan. Dan, who was there on site with Dominic when they walked?
Well, right, I think Dominic's on the line, but you're right, I think Mitch was there, and certainly the engineering folks were out there. Dominic, I don't know if you're on, if you want to chime in here.
Rec Director speaking now.
Lauren Johnston, Parks and Recreation. I was not there for the site selected next to the Green Lion. I'm not sure where that was a part of the conversation. We were looking at city-owned property at the golf course and what areas we had that we could operationally put something. We could not put anything at the golf clubhouse, which is where the Green Lion is, but we could only have the parcel next to the maintenance building. Our accessibility at Palm Harbor is limited for city-owned property, and we were, we did not have very many options.
All right, so this is where I guess I'm confused now. So you're saying the original coordinates were adjacent, and maybe Diamond Communications can clarify this, adjacent to the Green Lion. Is that correct?
Mayor, could I? Could I ask a question?
If you can help, yeah. Somebody needs to help.
So I think the issue, what we're coming down to, and this is for counsel, obviously, to decide and listen, the coordinates as specifically enumerated in the cellular master plan, apparently, and maybe not, not clear to anyone, and that's something you take into consideration, were intended to identify the parcel, the publicly owned parcel, which would be the same with any other publicly owned parcel. We've heard today from residents that believe that that is the actual specific site and does not mean the parcel. Obviously, the plan is not clear to say there is. I've read the plan five times this week to make sure we understood everything. There is no specific language in the plan that says the, this site coordinates are intended to include the entire parcel, so there probably is the expectation that now exists that the location moved, even though it is the parcel, and was intended to identify the parcel, as we heard from, from Diamond, and that's my takeaway from the plan. However, that's not what we have. Now we have an alternate location that will, in fact, on a lease, as we've heard today, have different specific coordinates than what are originally enumerated.
Okay, again, again, stop, please. We're trying to clarify everything, so let's get through this conversation, please. Okay, so in specific, then, Matt, so you're saying the original master plan did or did not have original coordinates?
It did have original coordinates. This site is not aligning with those. Again, it was intended to identify parcels. Now, if nothing else, we have to go back and revisit the rest of the master plan to identify that it is parcel-specific, not necessarily footprint, you know, exact minutes, degrees, seconds specific, and the plan does not make that distinction. Madam Mayor?
I am actually going to hand the gavel over to the vice mayor and make a motion to table to a time certain this agenda item until we get clarification on what the original coordinates to what is now being discussed by the lease agreement to a time certain, the next business meeting, so this item can be discussed and approved, and it will not be on the consent agenda. That's my motion.
I second it.
And it's a table to a time certain, so we cannot take public comment. It is a time certain issue.
I certainly agree with you.
So I called a question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, can I clarify the, the meeting date, please? We have July 5th, sorry, January 5th is the special meeting. The next business meeting thereafter is January 19th, I believe.
January 19th. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, and I hope this matter will be resolved at the next meeting. Thank you. And we do appreciate your comments. Okay. So, counsel, we'll now move to public participation. This is for members of the public wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda.
Why would you say that the, the location is consistent with the...
We've moved on.
On items not on the agenda. You've already discussed, you've already approached at the beginning of the meeting, so yeah, it's one time. Thank, no. Thank you.
I just want to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. You've not spoken at the beginning, have you, Celia?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Now, these are items not on the agenda. These are not, you can't speak to items that...
It's not on items on the agenda. But in general, I have to appreciate this council in ahead of time for looking for our quality of life, safety, and pursuit of happiness, because we lose our sleep over some issues in the past, whatever. Thank you, Mr. Danko. I have to appreciate...
Just call me Ed.
Ed, okay, I don't remember your first name. Mr. Brankino, also, please look into past issues, whatever the future, what we also the residents want, and is the way that will be, will make, for you to stay in office forever, in this position, in any other higher, mayor, every one of you, and I hope our council keeps on, on acting with us as a council. I understand that Mr. Reichman is not part of the council. He is just the advisor of the council. And I think today, or other, other times, I heard a little bit different, the way that things are decided by council. But I really appreciate you looking for the residents, because we have so many things in the past coming. for the residents, because we have so many things in the past coming and also in the future that affect us. So, thank you very much for going for us.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for considering the legalities of the parcel.
Okay, but sir, this is not on the, we've already discussed this item. This is for issues...
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda before. I wanted to talk about the health issues and the visual impact of this, of this proposal, so may I do that, please? I didn't speak at the beginning.
Go ahead.
May I do that? Thank you. Um, I partic, I thank you for showing a little bit of fairness, and I hope that will continue. Um, we wish to protect our children and neighbors from ill health. That's my primary concern, and I know this is part of my First Amendment rights, even regardless of the 1996 laws on this. Um, there is a five times increase in cancers within 350 yards of, of a tel, of these, these masts. That's the Wolf from Wolf 2004. I'm going to give you scientific things to look at. Um, there is a 13.9% increase in childhood leukemia. This is a 1996 Polish military research. Um, there is a variety of other cancers, neurological damage, DNA damage, decreased fertility, that's Eschanda 2012, increased diabetes, MEO 2015. There are a variety of other symptoms, which I won't go into now. Aside from the human impact, which is my main concern, having a young family, and please, like, children are really important here, and I hope, Mayor, you, you will appreciate that. As, in addition to that, 77% of studies showed harmful effects to birds, 85% of studies showed harmful effects to bees, 87% of studies showed harmful effects to plants. You know, there are many eagles, owls in this area, lovely trees. It's a beautiful part of Palm Coast. You know, it's, you, you, I know the city markets itself and being the city of trees and has big birding events every year, so I, I hope you will take this seriously. The latest research recommends a 1,500-foot buffer from schools, hospitals, and homes to minimize health effects, PS 2019. This is commonly practiced throughout the Western world, and as Americans in a new city which has much land, we deserve this. You know, and I, again, my children, my young children are going to be 300 feet from this place. It's just, it's just not on. It's not fair. I don't, I don't want to have to move. You know, our neighbor Jane assured me that Mayor Holland, that you're a very caring person, and that you would be receptive to this argument, so I hope she's right. Um, in addition, it's an eyesore. There, there are issues with tele, with masts falling down as well. That's another health issue. Um, you know, and after a shaky start in not notifying any of the local population, you know, I trust you'll come good and put the interests of the residents first.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And have a low, safer and lower, lower visible location. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you for allowing me the time. Apologize for the emotion that I had before, a little bit coming up to the podium, but I'm not used to this. But unfortunately, it's too bad that Lou Vitale left the room, because he and I are the only, probably the only people in this room that make a living studying electromagnetic frequencies. And, and the only reason why I urge you, and I, I tried to speak to this before, about looking into more of the scientific data, is because really, I, I can almost guarantee you that you guys are making a decision about something you have no idea about. Um, we don't do anything. There are no, Chris was mentioning something about the FCC, the Federal Communications Act of 1996 indemnifies them for many sort of like legal ramifications or, or, or health effects that their, that their technology might, might cause. I mean, this is real. FCC, Federal Communications 1996 Act, you can look it up yourself. Um, but we don't have any intelligent scientific discussion on the frequency range emitted by this tower or the power density. If I told you the difference between micro watts per square centimeter or mi, or milliwatts per square centimeters, I can guarantee you, you couldn't give me, you couldn't give me a, a studied, intelligent answer about, about the, about the specs on this tower. Um, I would request that we know, and, and, and this tower being put up, what are, what are the future, what are the future contracts? Um, I don't know. I, I, this information was, was new to me about this tower site, so I don't know who your, um, who your contracts are with or whatnot, but, I mean, do you know the frequency range emitted? Do you know the, do you know the range on a cell tower? Do you know the range of a cell tower, whether it's GSM technology or M, or, or MDA technology? Do you know that that can be from 27 to 44 miles, the range? And so, I would ask you to ask more pointed questions and find somebody who's knowledgeable on this subject, so that maybe you can get some directional accuracy in the tower. That tower emits like a, like a, like a sphere, and it's indiscriminate in where it goes and who it contacts. It's going to blanket the area unnecessarily. I think there are smarter ways we can go about this. I'm not anti-technology. I just think there are more studied ways that we can go about this, but it takes you guys educating yourselves. You can't make decision on this, uh, on, on this issue, and I know that it, this, it was not about the master plan. I, I understand that, so, too bad I wasn't here before, but, uh, we need to make more studied, um, intelligent decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. Again, my name is William Furry. Um, I, um, don't want to address the lease, because, but the, um, the concerns that we have are definitely with the health issues, and that's already been addressed here by my neighbor Chris, so I support him in that. Also, this gentleman here with the concerns of the magnetic fields, I'm not an expert in that area, so I just want to say that, that he brought some light to what happens with these towers, and I think that should be looked into further. Um, also, uh, my profession, I'm a realtor, so although health is, trumps everything, um, in this case, uh, there's also a financial downside, in my opinion, to this tower, to all the residents that live in the founding area of Palm Coast. Uh, this area was the first area and was designed to be this utopia of a city by its framers. And in fact, the framers actually lived on Cole Place. It's actually been dubbed Executive Road, and I can guarantee you, uh, they did not design it to have a cell tower in the backyard and on a golf course. This is a residential area. It is not a commercial area, and the only reason why this tower is being placed there is because it is a golf course, a municipal land, uh, that is being used to put that there. If there was not a golf course there, no, more than likely, this would not be going there, right? So it's kind of a, a catch-22 for us here, that we, we bought a home to have a golf course view, and our municipality now has turned its back on us by saying, hey, we're going to use our city land to put something that might, uh, hurt us, um, health-wise and not so financially. Many of the people that live around this, this proposed area where this tower is going to go, um, are retired folks. They have invested all their wealth in their real estate. Most of their wealth is there, and you, this is something that you don't need a study for. No one's ever called me and said, hey, Will, I want a 3-2 with a pool in Palm Coast and make sure it has a view of a cell tower. People will pay less for a property that has a view of a, of a cell tower or have the health risks of being within proximity of it. And when you buy into a place and it's already there, the impacts have already been factored in. But when you take a, a place where one of my neighbors just recently invested into a home, spent over $400,000, um, and now potentially can lose up to 20% of his value because of this. So what are we exchanging here? A revenue share of a tower, or what, and what about the tax base? What about 20% of 500,000, and we take that by $100,000, but all the homes around there that may be selling in that? What is that going to do to our tax base? So what are we trading here? The dollars for a cell tower and the health implications that it could have on its neighbors, or the quality of life that people invested in this community for? So I pray that you guys would use, um, your best wisdom to do what's best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And then a closed public comment. We'll now move over to discussion by City Council of matters not on the agenda. Vice Mayor Brancino.
That's just, this, this cell tower, it's, it's a complicated matter. Uh, and I believe the engineer just told us that, uh, the magnetic fields go up from seven to 24 miles omnidirectionally, I gather, isn't it? Just say it. Omnidirectionally, it could go anywhere. Uh, and will impact the health of people. No doubt about it. What are we going to do to the people, once we say no to this one? What are we going to do to the people that lives near to the seven or eight towers that we already have up? That's where we come to a problem. Not that I believe in special people, because it's, there's no special people. There are special situations and special cases that we here will take into consideration. Uh, someone here today said that they don't know what one looks like when a monopole. Well, it's because somebody coming to this city hall many times didn't really look up, because less than, what, 300, 400 yards from us over here, there's one exactly the same that's going to be put in there, and we never seen it. So for the eyesore part of it, I think that most of us over here had gunned through that one over there 1,000 times, and we never noticed it. I went by the location many times, with the staff and without the staff. I went by the streets around it, and I'm talking about the eyesore part of it. Went by streets around it. Uh, and, uh, it's very hard unless you're right in certain parts of it, that from your backyard, you're going to be able to see it. Unless you really, because of the trees, unless you really live like where Mr. Challenger lives, it's from him, you could see it nicely. I went by. I was in every, almost in every one of those streets. But that's only for the eyesore part, okay, which is, in my opinion, at least of our problems. Our problem, in my opinion, it's the health, the health issue, okay? And once we have that health issue solved, at least understood, maybe we could deal with that a little better. But just don't forget one thing. Since 2007, we have seven or eight different locations with cell towers. What are we going to tell to that people that, I'm sorry? Uh, what are we going to tell them? That's, that's my question. So are we going to tell the people that they already got on there? And is this moving 100 feet? Is that going to make a difference, uh, uh, to what it is? I don't think it's going to make much of a difference between the original location and the one that is now, but I'm glad that we're actually going to look at that, because that's an issue, being moved out of the place where it was. Yeah, thank you.
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're not, we're not going to meet before Christmas, are we? No?
Yeah.
No. So I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and for those who don't believe in my faith, Happy Holidays and Feliz Natal, as we say in Portuguese. Thank you.
Also, Member Clive.
Of course, I emanate the same, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas regards that Vice Mayor Brancino did. I'd just also like to remind the council that when we meet during workshops and we're discussing items, it is that time for which it is useful for us to bring up these things, where you can try to gain consensus. Grandstanding, and this is my sole opinion, is not appreciated during a business meeting, where the discussion has not occurred in our only opportunity to discuss things as a council previously, and it's just an ineffective way to move forward. And in regards to just being unaware of what is coming, it's just not an effective way to govern. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbosa, do you have anything?
Uh, when I lived up north, um, these cell towers, they made it look like, um, it belonged there. Like, some of them put like bricks, uh, in front of them, like fictitious bricks. Other them, I seen, I think on the highway, they look like, uh, trees. Uh, I was just wondering if in the future we could change these cell towers, or the future ones coming, to make them look like they fit and belong there, so they won't be an eyesore. And, uh, Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Councilmember Danko, do you have anything?
I just want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, um, Happy Holidays, and, uh, hopefully we'll have a great New Year. Thank you.
Um, you know, I just, I had a question and a comment. You know, when I drive into City Hall and, and Mr. Morton, this is sort of directed at you, I see a lot of, um, tire tracks, um, and it, it seems like it's increasing every time. Is, is, do we have an issue back here with racing, car racing?
Do you want to address where we're at and how we're trying to address that issue?
What is that?
Yes, we have an issue with cars coming in in the evenings. Um, we've seen some young people here racing or burning tires out. Um, we have a vehicle that appears to have wrecked maybe doing that, parked over there, that's going to get towed shortly. Uh, we've been working with FCSO to, to address that issue. Um, as you know, specifically, I think it's in the next 30 days, we have a town center specific deputy coming on that will hopefully help accelerate the coverage for that and other town center issues.
Okay. I just want to make, I mean, that's a safety issue.
Absolutely, it's a safety issue. It's an aesthetic issue. It's, it's a bunch of issues around that. And again, we think we have one vehicle that wrecked itself doing that. It's a, it's a safety issue for the young people doing it, for the other people walking that jog here, that walk here, that walk their kids here. Um, we're, we're definitely trying to figure out how we address it and when it's occurring, and if we can tie it to, to any other event to know to be more proactive.
Um, and, and just to conclude as well, I appreciate for those that have remained here, everyone's patience today. I mean, again, these are procedural issues. We do have procedures in place, uh, to keep civility in order, so, um, I understand it's confusion, confusing to those that are new, uh, to the area, um, and I certainly appreciate the comments. Um, I, I think we're trying to get to the best resolution possible, um, and we have listened to all your comments and to taking those into account today. So, um, you know, please continue to stay engaged and involved. Um, again, I appreciate it. I think government is best served when we have an engaged community and engaged citizenry, so I appreciate it. Um, and let's all absolutely try to make sure that, you know, we're discussing all items. We have a lot of opportunity to do that during workshops. We have a lot of opportunity to do that during business meetings. We can't speak outside of these meetings. Uh, we're under the sunshine law, so what you see, uh, is us speaking and debating these items for the first time. So, um, we try to do that respectfully. We try to do that to get to the best interest of our community as a whole, but these are complicated issues. These are complicated decisions we're making, so, uh, we try to do the best we can, and I certainly appreciate, again, you being here today. So please share that with your neighbors as well. We want to make sure we get accurate information out there as well of what we decided today and what we're going to do moving forward. Thank you. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing, Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
I have two items today. One, I'm just going to call your attention to sole source purchase and emergency purchases, which are attached to your agenda packet and listed. Um, and then, second of all, I'm, I'm preloading the gun, but I want to leave a good Christmas message, and I think this is worth noting, because we just got it yesterday, from the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, which is a, a very reputable longstanding, over 100 years organization. Um, Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, of the United States and Canada, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Palm Coast for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2019. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to fully and clearly communicate our financial story, and to motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. In other words, making it accessible, um, and, and, uh, to our community, making sure our community has it. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So, congratulations. Thank you, council, for the strong financial reporting, for the auditing process you go through every year, for the review of the policies and procedures, um, and yet another, yet another feather of excellence, and there's a whole wall full of them upstairs, by Helena Alves and her team, uh, that keep this city, uh, very well accounted for, very well documented, and more importantly, communicate all that information in a very clear and concise way to the public. So thank you, Helena, and to the finance team for yet another excellent, uh, validated piece of work.
Great job.
Very good.
Does that conclude your comments, Mr. Morton?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Number 11 was already included.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn this.
Thank you. Thank you.